I'm calling to order this meeting. This is a additional meeting of the committee, the whole of the council of the district of Columbia. I'm Phil Mendelson, chairman of the council. And chair of the committee, the whole today is Tuesday, March 7, 2023. The time is 11:45 in the morning. This meeting is being held in the council chambers room 500 of the Johnny Wilson building, but it is also available to the public. Via the Zoom video conference broadcast platform. And incidentally, there's at least a couple of members who are participating. Via that platform. This meeting is also being broadcast live on council channel 13 and is available on the council's website, which is www.dccouncil.gov. This is what we call an additional meeting of the committee, the whole. That means it's not a regularly scheduled meeting. When we are complete the business of the committee, the whole, we will then adjourn and. A few minutes later, take up the legislative meeting, which is a regular scheduled meeting. The council meets as a legislature regularly on the first Tuesday of the month, which is today. So that will follow this committee, the whole. We begin our committee, the whole meetings determining whether we have a quorum. Mr. Cash, would you call the roll?
Chairman Mendelson.
Present.
Councilmember Allen.
Here.
Councilmember Bonds.
Here.
Councilmember Fruman.
Present.
Councilmember Gray.
Here.
Councilmember Henderson.
Here.
Councilmember Louis George. Councilmember Louis George.
Here.
Councilmember McDuffie.
Yeah.
Councilmember Nadeau.
Here.
Councilmember Parker.
Here.
Councilmember Pinto. Councilmember Pinto, Councilmember Robert White.
Present.
Councilmember Tryon White.
Present.
Mr. Chairman, you have a form.
Thank you, Mr. Cash. We have five measures for markup in the committee, the whole. And just to remind members, these measures are debatable. The first is Bill 25-23 entitled Woodson Way Designation Act of 2023. This bill would symbolically designate the 500 block of 55th Street Northeast as Woodson Way. The location is in Ward 7. A symbolic naming is for ceremonial purposes and shall be in addition to and subordinate to any name that is an official name. H D Woodson Senior High School is located at 540 55th Street Northeast. The school is in the Deanwood neighborhood and is named in honor of local civic leader and engineer Howard Dilworth Woodson. Mr. Woodson, along with other local residents, began advocating for a public high school in the far northeast. In the 1950s, because neighborhood students would otherwise attend schools west of the Anacostia River like Spingarn or Eastern. Or they would attend Anacostia High School, which was much further to the south. H D Woodson Senior High School opened in 1972, 10 years after Mr. Woodson's death. In 2022, the alumni and community celebrated H D Woodson's 50th anniversary. That's the high school's 50th anniversary. The school has a rich legacy of providing a quality education to learners across the district using an intentional focus on college. And career readiness to prepare its scholars to be competitive in their post-secondary pursuits. The school strives to maintain an environment where students feel loved, challenged, and prepared. The school is also well-known for its championship athletic programs. Woodson Way, which this bill would ceremonially name the street, the block, is fitting in that it is the school's motto. The motto was first mentioned by H D Woodson's first principal, Napoleon Lewis, and was continued by its second principal, James Curry. The idea behind the motto motto is that everything one does must be done with the highest level of effort, integrity, and respect. The Woodson Way is a source of pride and tradition to students, teachers, and administrators, past and present. Assuming this is approved by the committee, the committee of the whole recommends council approval of Bill 25-23, the Woodson Way Designation Act of 2023. The bill was first introduced by Councilmember Gray on October 3, 2022. The committee of the whole held a hearing on December 12, 2022. The committee has received no testimony or comments in opposition. On January 11, 2023, the bill was reintroduced as Bill 25-23, introduced by Councilmember Gray and seven other council members. If there's no objection, I will move both the print and report with leave for staff to make technical conforming and editorial changes. Is there discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Mr. Gray.
I want to thank you for moving this symbolic street designation. Representatives of the H D Woodson Alumni Association asked me to introduce this bill to honor the school's 50th anniversary in 2022. Fittingly, this bill will symbolically designate the block where the school sits as Woodson Way. I asked my colleagues' support. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Councilmember Gray. There's no further discussion. The roll call vote will be on both the print and report with leave for staff. Mr. Cash, would you call the roll?
Councilmember Parker. Yes. Councilmember Parker votes yes. Councilmember Pinto.
Yes.
Councilmember Pinto votes yes. Councilmember Robert White.
Yes.
Councilmember Robert White votes yes. Councilmember Tryon White.
Yes.
Councilmember Bonds votes yes. Councilmember Fruman.
Yes.
Councilmember Fruman votes yes. Councilmember Gray.
Yes.
Councilmember Gray votes yes. Councilmember Henderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis George.
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis George.
Yes.
Councilmember McDuffie.
Yeah.
Councilmember Nadeau.
Here.
Councilmember Parker.
Here.
Councilmember Pinto. Councilmember Robert White.
Present.
Councilmember Tryon White.
Present.
Mr. Chairman, you have a form.
Thank you, Mr. Cash. We have five measures for markup in the committee, the whole. And just to remind members, these measures are debatable. The first is Bill 25-23 entitled Woodson Way Designation Act of 2023. This bill would symbolically designate the 500 block of 55th Street Northeast as Woodson Way. The location is in Ward 7. A symbolic naming is for ceremonial purposes and shall be in addition to and subordinate to any name that is an official name. H D Woodson Senior High School is located at 540 55th Street Northeast. The school is in the Deanwood neighborhood and is named in honor of local civic leader and engineer Howard Dilworth Woodson. Mr. Woodson, along with other local residents, began advocating for a public high school in the far northeast. In the 1950s, because neighborhood students would otherwise attend schools west of the Anacostia River like Spingarn or Eastern. Or they would attend Anacostia High School, which was much further to the south. H D Woodson Senior High School opened in 1972, 10 years after Mr. Woodson's death. In 2022, the alumni and community celebrated H D Woodson's 50th anniversary. That's the high school's 50th anniversary. The school has a rich legacy of providing a quality education to learners across the district using an intentional focus on college. And career readiness to prepare its scholars to be competitive in their post-secondary pursuits. The school strives to maintain an environment where students feel loved, challenged, and prepared. The school is also well-known for its championship athletic programs. Woodson Way, which this bill would ceremonially name the street, the block, is fitting in that it is the school's motto. The motto was first mentioned by H D Woodson's first principal, Napoleon Lewis, and was continued by its second principal, James Curry. The idea behind the motto motto is that everything one does must be done with the highest level of effort, integrity, and respect. The Woodson Way is a source of pride and tradition to students, teachers, and administrators, past and present. Assuming this is approved by the committee, the committee of the whole recommends council approval of Bill 25-23, the Woodson Way Designation Act of 2023. The bill was first introduced by Councilmember Gray on October 3, 2022. The committee of the whole held a hearing on December 12, 2022. The committee has received no testimony or comments in opposition. On January 11, 2023, the bill was reintroduced as Bill 25-23, introduced by Councilmember Gray and seven other council members. If there's no objection, I will move both the print and report with leave for staff to make technical conforming and editorial changes. Is there discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Mr. Gray.
I want to thank you for moving this symbolic street designation. Representatives of the H D Woodson Alumni Association asked me to introduce this bill to honor the school's 50th anniversary in 2022. Fittingly, this bill will symbolically designate the block where the school sits as Woodson Way. I quote Woodson Way. I asked my colleagues' support. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Councilmember Gray. There's no further discussion. The roll call vote will be on both the print and report with leave for staff. Mr. Cash, would you call the roll?
Councilmember Parker. Yes. Councilmember Parker votes yes. Councilmember Pinto.
Yes.
Councilmember Pinto votes yes. Councilmember Robert White.
Yes.
Councilmember Robert White votes yes. Councilmember Tryon White.
Yes.
Councilmember Tryon White votes yes. Councilmember Allen.
Yes.
Councilmember Allen votes yes. Councilmember Bonds.
Yes.
Councilmember Fruman votes yes. Councilmember Gray.
Yes.
Councilmember Gray votes yes. Councilmember Henderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson votes yes. Councilmember Louis George.
Yes.
Councilmember Louis George votes yes. Councilmember McDuffie.
Yes.
Councilmember McDuffie votes yes. Chairman Mendelson.
Yes.
Chairman Mendelson votes yes. Councilmember Nadeau.
Yes.
Councilmember Nadeau votes yes. Mr. Chairman, there are 13 yeses.
Thank you, Mr. Cash. The print and report are approved unanimously. Madam General Counsel, is the measure legally and technically sufficient for our consideration?
Yes, it is.
I'm secretary as to record complete, Mr. Assistant Secretary.
Once. Once the report is filed.
Now I've lost my place. Madam Budget Director, does the measure's fiscal impact statement comply with council requirements?
Yes, it does.
Without objection, this measure will be placed on the consent agenda for today's legislative meeting. The second measure for markup is Bill 25-68 entitled the Street Vendor Advancement Amendment Act of 2023. This bill would amend the Vending Regulation Act of 2009 to remove criminal penalties for violations of the vending law or regulations. To allow the mayor to establish sidewalk vending zones in the district, to establish a sidewalk vending zone in Columbia Heights. And waive unpaid fines for vending-related citations issued for sidewalk vendors who obtain a sidewalk vending zone individual license. Or register with a sidewalk vending zone manager. The committee print is much broader in effect than the introduced bill. Fundamentally, this legislation is about making it easier for sidewalk vendors to become licensed and to make a living. I'm going to go over some of the provisions that are in the bill, and I am excerpting from the committee report, so there's much more detail in the committee report. First, the committee print removes language in the code, in the existing DC code, applying criminal penalties to violations of the vending law and regulations. Second, the committee print amends the definition of cottage food product to allow for the sale of non-prepackaged, potentially hazardous food. And revises the packaging and labeling requirements so that if a product cannot be prepackaged. The cottage food licensee must have signage with information that is required on labels, that's currently required on labels for prepackaged food. Third, the committee print ensures that vendors do not need to undergo a criminal background check prior to or after receiving a license. Fourth, the committee print reduces the cost of fees associated with vending licenses, with vending licenses and permits. Costs the fees which can be quite onerous for vendors. The committee report on pages nine and 10. Actually, pages eight, nine, and 10 go through what some of these costs are. And the costs can be as much as $50,000 over two years. A significant obstacle for somebody who wishes to do sidewalk vending. The committee print loosens cart equipment requirements for certain vendors. And it amends food vending cart service and storage requirements to give street vendors more options for storage. The committee print makes substantive changes to the current civil enforcement regime. The print reclassifies current civil infractions related to street vending, only vending without a license or permit. Or knowingly altering, forging, or mutilating a license or permit are maintained as Class 1 civil infractions. I believe right now there are 10 Class 1 civil infractions, and with this print, there will be two. Again, vending without a license or permit, or knowingly altering, forging, or mutilating a license or permit. The committee print also makes changes to the sidewalk vending zone licenses. And the committee print establishes a Columbia Heights Mount Pleasant sidewalk vending zone. The committee print establishes an amnesty program. For decades, the district government has approached street and sidewalk vending with hostility, leading to criminal enforcement of civil infractions. Onerous fees and overly restrictive regulations that impede people's ability to make a living from vending. This bill, Bill 25-68, represents an opportunity to correct this dynamic by removing criminal enforcement of vending laws and regulations. By reducing fees, making it easier for vendors to operate and service vending carts. Establishing a sidewalk vending zone in Columbia Heights and Mount Pleasant that will serve as a pilot for a more collaborative approach. To the administration of vending space and regulations. And by creating an amnesty program to help vendors burdened with fines become compliant again. These desperately needed reforms will ensure that vendors and aspiring vendors, most of whom are black and Hispanic or Hispanic. Have a genuine opportunity to thrive. Given these facts and assuming that there's an affirmative vote, the committee recommends council approval of the committee of the whole print for Bill 25-68. This bill was originally introduced in the last council period as two bills, Bill 24-49, introduced by Councilmember Nadeau and co-introduced by eight other council members. And Bill 24-50, introduced by Councilmember Nadeau and co-introduced by five other council members. The committee of the whole held a public hearing on these bills, on those bills on November 26, 2022. On January 25 of this year, Bill 25-68, a combination of the two bills was introduced by Councilmember Nadeau and myself. I'm going to move the print with leave for staff to make technical and conforming changes. Is there discussion?
Chairman.
Councilmember Henderson. I thought I heard. It would help if I look. Councilmember Nadeau.
I mean, I'm not going to tell you how to do your job, but I'll. Thank you, Chairman. Thank you, Chairman. This has been a long road. This is the third introduction of this legislation. I'm glad to have been joined by some fellow travelers, including, and I say this with great appreciation, you, Chairman Mendelson.
Education to learners across the district using an intentional focus on college and career readiness to prepare its scholars to be competitive in their post-secondary pursuits. The school strives to maintain an environment where students feel loved, challenged, and prepared. The school is also well-known for its championship athletic programs. Woodson Way, which this bill would ceremonially name the street, the block, is fitting in that it is the school's motto. The motto was first mentioned by H. D. Woodson's first principal, Napoleon Lewis, and was continued by its second principal, James Curry. The idea behind the motto motto is that everything one does must be done with the highest level of effort, integrity, and respect. The Woodson Way is a source of pride and tradition to students, teachers, and administrators past and present. Assuming this is approved by the committee, the Committee of the Whole recommends council approval of Bill twenty-five dash twenty-three, the Woodson Way Designation Act of two thousand and twenty-three. The bill was first introduced by Councilmember Gray on October third, two thousand and twenty-two. The Committee of the Whole held a hearing on December twelfth, two thousand and twenty-two. The committees received no testimony or comments in opposition. On January eleventh, two thousand and twenty-three, the bill was reintroduced as Bill twenty-five dash twenty-three, introduced by Councilmember Gray and seven other council members. If there is no objection, I will move both the print and report with leave for staff to make technical conforming and editorial changes. Is there discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Mr. Gray.
I want to thank you for moving this symbolic street designation. Representatives of the H. D. Woodson Alumni Association asked me to introduce this bill to honor the school's fiftieth anniversary in two thousand and twenty-two. Fittingly, this bill will symbolically designate the block where the school sits as Woodson Way. I quote Woodson Way. I asked my colleagues' support. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Councilmember Gray. There's no further discussion. The roll call vote will be on both the print and report with leave for staff. Mr. Cash, would you call the roll?
Councilmember Parker.
Yes.
Councilmember Parker votes yes. Councilmember Pinto.
Yes.
Councilmember Pinto votes yes. Councilmember Robert White.
Yes.
Councilmember Robert White votes yes. Councilmember Tran White.
Yes.
Councilmember Tran White votes yes. Councilmember Allen. Yes. Councilmember Allen votes yes. Councilmember Bonds.
Yes.
Councilmember Bonds votes yes. Councilmember Fruman.
Yes.
Councilmember Fruman votes yes. Councilmember Gray.
Yes.
Councilmember Gray votes yes. Councilmember Henderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson votes yes. Councilmember Louis George.
Yes.
Councilmember Louis George votes yes. Councilmember McDuffie.
Yes.
Councilmember McDuffie votes yes. Chairman Mendelson.
Yes.
Chairman Mendelson votes yes. Councilmember Nadeau.
Yes.
Councilmember Nadeau votes yes. Mr. Chairman, there are thirteen yeses.
Thank you, Mr. Cash. The print and report are approved unanimously. Madam General Counsel, is the measure legally and technically sufficient for our consideration?
Yes, it is.
Madam Secretary is to record complete, Mr. Assistant Secretary.
Once. Once the report is filed.
Now I've lost my place. Madam Budget Director, does the measure's fiscal impact statement comply with council requirements?
Yes, it does.
Without objection, this measure will be placed on the consent agenda for today's legislative meeting. The second measure for markup is Bill twenty-five dash sixty-eight entitled the Street Vendor Advancement Amendment Act of two thousand and twenty-three. This bill would amend the Vending Regulation Act of two thousand and nine to remove criminal to remove criminal penalties for violations of the vending law or regulations, to allow the mayor to establish sidewalk vending zones in the district, to establish a sidewalk vending zone in Columbia Heights, and waive unpaid fines for vending-related citations issued for sidewalk vendors who obtain a sidewalk vending zone individual license or register with a sidewalk vending zone manager. The committee print is much broader in effect than the introduced bill. Fundamentally, this legislation is about making it easier for sidewalk vendors to become licensed and to make a living. I'm going to go over some of the provisions that are in the bill, and I am excerpting from the committee report, so there's much more detail in the committee report. First, the committee print removes language in the code, in the existing D. C. Code, applying criminal penalties to violations of the vending law and regulations. Second, the committee print amends the definition of cottage food product to allow for the sale of non-prepackaged, potentially hazardous food, and revises the packaging and labeling requirements so that if a product cannot be prepackaged, the cottage food licensee must have signage with information that is required on labels, that's currently required on labels, for prepackaged food. Third, the committee print ensures that vendors do not need to undergo a criminal background check prior to or after receiving a license. Fourth, the committee print reduces the cost of fees associated with vending licenses, with vending licenses and permits, costs, the fees which can be quite onerous for vendors. The committee report on page nine and ten, actually pages eight, nine, and ten, go through what some of these costs are, and the costs can be as much as fifty thousand dollars over two years, a significant obstacle for somebody who wishes to do sidewalk vending. The committee print loosens cart equipment requirements for certain vendors, and it amends food vending cart service and storage requirements to give street vendors more options for storage. The committee print makes substantive changes to the current civil enforcement regime. The print reclassifies current civil infractions related to street vending, only vending without a license or permit, or knowingly altering, forging, or mutilating a license or permit, are maintained as class-one civil infractions. I believe right now there are ten class-one civil infractions, and with this print, there will be two. Again, vending without a license or permit, or knowingly altering, forging, or mutilating a license or permit. The committee print also makes changes to the sidewalk vending zone licenses, and the committee print establishes a Columbia Heights Mount Pleasant sidewalk vending zone. The committee print establishes an amnesty program. For decades, the district government has approached street and sidewalk vending with hostility, leading to criminal enforcement of civil infractions, onerous fees, and overly restrictive regulations that impede people's ability to make a living from vending. This bill, Bill twenty-five dash sixty-eight, represents an opportunity to correct this dynamic by removing criminal enforcement of vending laws and regulations, by reducing fees, making it easier for vendors to operate and service vending carts, establishing a sidewalk vending zone in Columbia Heights and Mount Pleasant that will serve as a pilot for a more collaborative approach to the administration of vending space and regulations, and by creating an amnesty program to help vendors burdened with fines become compliant again. These desperately needed reforms will ensure that vendors and aspiring vendors, most of whom are black and Hispanic or Hispanic, have a genuine opportunity to thrive. Given these facts, and assuming that there is an affirmative vote, the committee recommends council approval of the committee of the whole print for Bill twenty-five dash sixty-eight. This bill was originally introduced in the last council period as two bills, Bill twenty-four dash forty-nine, introduced by Councilmember Nadeau and co-introduced by eight other council members, and Bill twenty-four dash fifty, introduced by Councilmember Nadeau and co-introduced by five other council members. Committee of the Whole held a public hearing on these bills, on those bills, on November twenty-six, two thousand and twenty-two. On January twenty-fifth of this year, Bill twenty-five dash sixty-eight, a combination of the two bills was introduced by Councilmember Nadeau and myself. I'm going to move the print with leave for staff to make technical and conforming changes. Is there discussion?
Chairman.
Councilmember Henderson. I thought I heard. It would help if I look. Councilmember Nadeau.
I mean, I'm not going to tell you how to do your job, but I'll. Thank you, Chairman. Uh, thank you, Chairman. Um, this has been a long road. This is the third introduction of this legislation. I'm glad to have been joined by some fellow travelers, including, and I say this with great appreciation, you, Chairman Mendelson. I also want to thank Councilmembers Gray and Allen for cosponsoring, and so many others who introduced prior versions of the bills. I'm thrilled to have in the chamber today, street vendors and advocates with Vendedores Unidos and beloved community incubator who have guided this process from the time when we first began working together to create access to grants, food handling certification, commercial cooking space, and eventually the effort to change district law. Street vendors contribute to the vibrant atmosphere of Columbia Heights, Mount Pleasant, and diverse neighborhoods throughout the district. Their presence reflects and enriches the diverse culture of our city. It's an essential part of what makes Ward One so energetic and beautiful. Street vendors contribute to the local economy, and their vending supports themselves and their families. In two thousand and nineteen, after the well-known incident in which police confronted a fifteen-year-old who was selling goods while her mother ran errands that resulted in injury and trauma for this girl, and emphasized the point that street vending violations should not be criminal matters. If a business owner with a store has an expired license, police don't come and arrest them. Now that spot outside the Pan Am Grocery Store on Fourteenth Street is lifted up in the committee report for this bill, included in the map of the legally permitted vending locations in the new Columbia Heights Mount Pleasant vending zone. That is a symbolic victory alongside all the more tangible victories contained in this bill. So what does the legislation do? First, it stops the criminalization of street vending. Enforcement should be a licensing issue, as it is with other businesses. We had a robust discussion of this at the council breakfast, and I appreciate colleagues' ideas to make sure we craft a new enforcement system that is both fair and effective. This bill also creates a vending zone manager for a new pilot zone in Columbia Heights Mount Pleasant with potential for other managers elsewhere, and that contract is also important for compliance and enforcement as much as it is for support and empowerment of vendors. A vending zone manager will be responsible for site planning, resolving conflicts between vendors, ensuring licensing is up to date, keeping track of all vendors within the, in the zone, and communicating with the Department of Licensing and Consumer Protection. The bill critically makes it easier for a vendor to get the licenses and approvals they need to start and run their businesses. As Chairman Mendelson has said previously, regulations should not be so onerous that ordinary people, many of whom are immigrants and people of color, cannot enter this line of work and make a living. There's a philosophy underlying these licensing changes. We're changing street vending from something just tolerated, and sometimes barely tolerated, to recognizing it as a fundamental part of our economy, a pathway to economic empowerment for residents, and indeed, an economic development engine itself. Mr. Chairman, may I continue?
Without objection.
As our experience in Columbia Heights has shown, formalizing this economy provides opportunities to create more active and lively spaces, and even helps with public safety, providing more consistent eyes on the street. Last but not least, the legislation creates an amnesty program for unpaid licensing-related civil citations for vendors who properly obtain the necessary licenses. I want to acknowledge again the people who are here. You've raised your voices, shared your experiences, and kept me and my fellow council members accountable for moving this forward. Government works best when it's partnership, when it's a partnership with residents, and you have made this very much a partnership. I also want to thank the chairman and his staff, especially Blaine Stumm, who has done a masterful job, not only on the committee print, but on the report itself, which encompasses the full arc of the history of vending laws in D. C. dating all the way back to the eighteen hundreds. Through this legislation, we can move all vendors into full compliance, allow them to successfully run their businesses and provide for their families, and to operate without unnecessary barriers and without fear, and support and lift up the vibrancy of our community and community members. As the Chair of the Public Works and Operations Committee with oversight of D. L. C. P., I'm excited to begin the work of oversight as the executive implements this legislation. And as the Ward One Councilmember, I'm very excited to see the establishment of the new Columbia Heights Mount Pleasant vending zone, as well as the additional study of how to best support vendors with new physical infrastructure such as storage space, public restrooms, and public spaces built with vending in mind. I'm happy to work with colleagues to see how the experience of this pilot zone can be helped through throughout the district. Thank you, Chairman, and I ask my colleagues to join me in voting for the committee print is circulated.
Thank you, Councilmember Nadeau. Further, Councilmember Henderson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, Mr. Chairman, I have several concerns with the committee print, specifically regarding provisions that make significant changes to the district's cottage food laws and regulations. The district's cottage food license is currently designed to enable small food businesses who sell non-potentially hazardous foods made in their home kitchens directly to consumers. The term "non-potentially hazardous" food includes food products that do not need time, do not need time or temperature controls in order to be considered safe for consumption, such as herbs, spices, popcorn, and baked goods. The committee print would expand the definition of cottage food products and strip D. C. Health of its discretion to determine the list of cottage food products. As written, it states that cottage food products would include, quote, "any prepared, processed, or packaged food product except uncooked or raw meats or raw dairy products." Through conversations with D. C. Health and the street vendor community, I believe that we can create a tailored solution here that is consistent with food safety best practices. D. C. Health has voiced strong opposition to this provision, and I share their concerns that food businesses selling food products that do require time and temperature controls, like raw, cut produce, and prepared food, should meet a higher food safety standard than the current cottage food program, than the current cottage food program requires, and that this current language could lead to increased foodborne illnesses for district residents. Further, the provisions would impact far more than the businesses that this license, excuse me, that this legislation reports to be for. The changes to the cottage food laws would expand the program to include any person selling food made in their homes, so long as they take a food safety training or apply for a license through D. C. Health. Um, I plan to work with you, Mr. Chairman, as well as D. C. Health and my colleagues between now and second reading on some compromised language. Um, but over the last few days, D. C. Health has expressed an interest and willingness to work with council staffs and the street vendor community to develop a licensing system that works for both parties. I'm optimistic that we can reach a more tailored solution that aligns with food food safety best practices, but unfortunately, today I can't vote in favor of this legislation. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Henderson. Uh, let me note that I am eager to work with you, see that if we can make some improvements with regard to this language. My office has already reached out to the Department of Health. Uh, I do want to note for members that there are a number of states that have similar approach in this, similar to this committee print with regard to cottage food laws. Uh, I also want to note, to be clear on the record, cottage food applicants with this bill will still have to pass a certified food protection manager examination to receive a license, and there will be warning labels, just as there is now, there would be warning labels on cottage food, something to the effect of "made by cottage food business that is not subject to the District of Columbia's food safety regulations", uh, which gives in helps consumers to be informed. Uh, but, um, yes, we will work together. Councilmember Pinto.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman, and I want to congratulate you and Councilmember Nadeau and all those in the room who've worked so hard on this important issue. Um, I am looking forward to supporting this bill today and think it's a great step towards supporting and advancing entrepreneurship in our city. I do want to highlight that, as is included in the bill, street vending will not be permissible or appropriate everywhere in the city, and it's still going to be really important to work closely together with the Department of Consumer Affairs and Licensing, D. L. C. P. Uh, missed a word there, but to make sure that we're all both prioritizing getting licenses and doing so in an expedited fashion and making sure that we can all work together safely to do so. I am concerned with Councilmember Henderson's point about the cottage food and look forward to following along that effort in the next two weeks to see how how health can be prioritized. And lastly, I just want to confirm for the record something that we talked about at this morning's breakfast, which was around drug sales and cannabis. And while we are in this unusual state of affairs in the District of Columbia with having an inability to regulate our adult-use cannabis market in the way that we'd like to, that sales of drugs or cannabis are still not permitted in the district if you are not licensed to do so. Just want to make that clear for the record. Thank you.
Uh, thank you, yes. And just to reinforce that point, this bill does nothing to change the medical marijuana law, uh, just as it does nothing to change the, um, the law regarding, um, the sale of alcohol. Um, and I just cite that as well because any product that is separately regulated in how it can be sold, if it can be sold, is unaffected by this, and those prohibitions would remain in full force. Is there any further discussion on this bill? Councilmember Parker.
Thank you, Chairman. I just want to note as well, uh, the concerns from D. C. Health, uh, and I share uh, the concerns of Councilmember Henderson, uh, and appreciate the commitments that both you and Councilmember Nadeau have made uh, to take action, follow up, work with them, uh, to address those concerns. I do think there is a path forward uh, to tailor, uh, the aspects of the definition around cottage foods to pertain just to, um, street vendors, uh, versus, uh, opening up the definition, uh, more broadly. There was also a lot of discussion this morning around enforcement that there is a commitment for you all to address. Um, and so today I do look forward to voting, uh, in favor of this and applaud both you and Councilmember Nadeau's efforts here. I believe this is a positive step for the district. Uh, but I also just want to note my concerns around the ambiguity around how we are going to enforce this, uh, the language in both the committee print, uh, and I would just point members to the racial equity impact assessment here uh, that reads, "While decriminalization of unlicensed vending may reduce police interactions with vendors, it is not clear that it or other government enforcement behavior will be fully improved." And so with that, if there can be, uh, greater emphasis placed on um, the work that district agencies will take to enforce the regulations, that would be much appreciated.
Thank you, Councilmember. Uh, further on the, uh, print, what we have before us is the print with leave for staff to make technical conforming changes. We'll have a roll call on that, and then a voice vote on the report. Mr. Cash, would you call the roll?
Councilmember Pinto.
Yes.
Councilmember Pinto votes yes. Councilmember Robert White. Yes. Councilmember Robert White votes yes. Councilmember Tran White. Councilmember Tran White.
Yes.
Yes. Councilor Tran White votes yes. Councilmember Allen.
Yes.
Councilmember Allen votes yes. Councilmember Bonds.
Yes.
Councilmember Bonds votes yes. Councilmember Fruman.
Yes.
Councilmember Fruman votes yes. Councilmember Gray.
No.
Councilmember Gray votes no. Councilmember Henderson.
No.
Councilmember Henderson votes no. Councilmember Louis George.
Yes.
Councilmember Louis George votes yes. Councilmember McDuffie.
Yes.
Councilmember McDuffie votes yes. Chairman Mendelson.
Yes.
Chairman Mendelson votes yes. Councilmember Nadeau.
Yes.
Councilmember Nadeau votes yes. Councilmember Parker.
Yes.
Councilmember Parker votes yes. Mr. Chairman, there are eleven yeses and two nos.
Thank you, Mr. Cash. The print is approved. We can have order, please, in the chamber. Uh, I move the report with leave for staff to make technical conforming and editorial changes. Is there discussion? We'll have a voice vote on the report, and if anybody wishes to vote no, um, please identify yourselves. All those in favor of the report with leave for staff, say aye.
Aye.
Are there any no votes?
Record me as voting no, Mr. Chairman.
Councilmember Henderson will be recorded as voting no.
Yeah.
Councilmember Gray, were you saying anything?
No, I don't, Mr. Chairman. I voted no.
Uh, Mr. Gray voted no on the report. Uh, the ayes have it on the report. Madam General Counsel, is the measure legally and technically sufficient for our consideration?
Yes, it is.
Madam Secretary is to record complete.
Once the report is filed.
Madam Budget Director, does the measure's fiscal impact statement comply with council requirements?
It does, and to note for the record, this measure is, uh, does have a cost of seven hundred and sixty-four thousand in F. Y. twenty-three and, uh, two point four million over the four-year plan.
Uh, thank you, and that's important to note that not only because the council have to get through second reading and there'll uh, be some changes to the bill, but then the bill has to be funded as well to be, um, effective. Uh, this measure will be placed on the non-consent agenda for today's, uh, legislative meeting. The third measure is P. R. twenty-five dash one zero seven, closing of a portion of a public alley in square four oh five three. S. O. twenty-two dash zero zero four one zero, approval resolution of twenty twenty-three. Proposed resolution twenty-five dash one zero seven would close a portion of a public alley in lots sixteen and seventeen of square four oh five three. Where is that? It's bounded by Realm Street, Montello Avenue, on Elevate Road, and West Virginia Avenue, all in northeast, all in Ward Five. The alley closure will facilitate the installation of a secure garage door for private parking space behind seventeen twenty-eight Montello Avenue. The portion of the public alley that will be closed is not used for transportation or other purposes. In fact, the property owners have been caring for their alleys since they purchased their homes. According to testimony from the surveyor, no executive agencies or utilities have objections to the closure. Assuming this is approved by the council, the committee, or by the committee, I should say, the committee finds that the portion of the public alley in lots sixteen and seventeen in square four oh five three as depicted on the surveyor's plat is unnecessary for alley purposes. Accordingly, the committee recommends approval of the committee print for P. R. twenty-five dash one zero seven. Uh, this resolution was introduced at the request of the mayor last October seventeenth, and the Committee of the Whole held a hearing on December twelfth, last December twelfth. The measure was reintroduced through request of the mayor on February sixth of this year. Uh, this is a very strange geographically situation. It's like a little bump out from the alley. That's part of the alley. Um, and that's why it's easy to say that it serves no public purpose, and, uh, that, um, and it's also the fact that the property owner has been caring for it because it's, as I say, like a bump out from the alley. I move, if there's no objection, I move both the print and report with leave for staff to make technical conforming and editorial changes. Is there discussion? The vote will be on both the print report for P. R. twenty-five dash one zero seven. Mr. Cash, would you call the roll?
Councilmember Robert White. Yes. Councilmember Robert White votes yes. Councilmember Tran White.
Yes.
Councilmember Tran White votes yes. Councilmember Allen.
Yes.
Councilmember Allen votes yes. Councilmember Bonds.
Yes.
Councilmember Bonds votes yes. Councilmember Fruman.
Yes.
Councilmember Fruman votes yes. Councilmember Gray.
Yes.
Councilmember Gray votes yes. Councilmember Henderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson votes yes. Councilmember Louis George.
Yes.
Councilmember Louis George votes yes. Councilmember McDuffie.
Yes.
Councilmember McDuffie votes yes. Chairman Mendelson.
Yes.
Chairman Mendelson votes yes. Councilmember Nadeau.
Yes.
Councilmember Nadeau votes yes. Councilmember Parker.
Yes.
Councilmember Parker votes yes. Councilmember Pinto.
Yes.
Councilmember Pinto votes yes. Mr. Chairman, there are thirteen yeses.
Mr. Thank you, Mr. Cash. The, um, vote was thirteen to nothing. The print and report with leave for staff are approved unanimously. Madam General Counsel, is the measure legally and technically sufficient for our consideration?
Yes, it is.
Madam Secretary is to record complete.
Once the report is filed.
Madam Budget Director, does the measure's fiscal impact statement comply with council requirements?
Yes, it does.
Without objection, this measure will be placed on the consent agenda for today's legislative meeting. Next measure is P. R. twenty-five dash one zero eight, closing of a portion of Marlin Street Northwest and the removal of the associated building restriction line, S. O. twenty-one dash zero five zero six three, approval resolution of two thousand and twenty-three. We're actually probably going to change to short title because we are not removing the building restriction line because the building restriction line goes away automatically if we close the street. So that will be a leave for staff. Proposed resolution twenty-five dash zero eight, twenty-five dash one zero eight, would close a portion of Marlin Street northwest adjacent to squares twenty-three oh seven, twenty-three oh eight, and twenty-three fourteen. And I believe this is in Ward Four, not Ward Three. That's another correction to the committee report. The unimproved portion of Marlin Street that will be closed is a paper street that is approximately four hundred feet long and runs behind or beside eight single-family homes. The closure will allow adjacent homeowners to mitigate invasive bamboo dumping of trash and water runoff that is causing damage to at least one property owner's yard. According to testimony from the applicant for the closure, the adjacent property owners already care for much of this paper street. And there are, in addition to what I said earlier, bamboo, invasive bamboo dumping of trash, there are also significant issues with water runoff that cannot be adequately addressed until the street is formally closed. The applicant also knows that none of the adjacent property owners desire to see the paper road surfaced or otherwise used for transportation purposes, and their homes are already served by other improved streets. I'll note that the Department of Transportation testified and had no objection to this legislation. And actually, the mayor, it was introduced at the mayor's request. The bill, the resolution was introduced on October seventeenth, two oh two-two, two thousand twenty-two, at the request of the mayor. The committee, the whole, held a public hearing on the measure on December twelfth. The committee, the whole, received no testimony and opposition. The measure was reintroduced on February sixth, twenty twenty-three, at the request of the mayor. There's no objection. I move both the print and report would leave for staff to make technical conforming and editorial changes. Is there discussion? Mr. Cash will call the roll. The vote will be on both the print and report with leave for staff.
Councilmember Tran White.
Yes.
Councilmember Tran White votes yes. Councilmember Allen. Councilmember Allen. Councilmember Bonds.
Yes.
Councilmember Bonds votes yes. Councilmember Fruman.
Yes.
Councilmember Fruman votes yes. Councilmember Gray.
Yes.
Councilmember Gray votes yes. Councilmember Henderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson votes yes. Councilmember Louis George.
Yes.
Councilmember Louis George votes yes. Councilman McDuffie.
Yes.
Councilmember McDuffie votes yes. Chairman Mendelson.
Yes.
Chairman Mendelson votes yes. Councilmember Nadeau.
Yes.
Councilmember Nadeau votes yes. Councilmember Parker.
Yes.
Councilmember Parker votes yes. Councilmember Pinto.
Yes.
Councilmember Pinto votes yes. Councilmember Robert White. Yes. Councilmember Robert White votes yes. Councilmember Allen. Yes. Councilmember Allen votes yes. Mr. Chairman, there are thirteen yeses.
The ayes have it unanimously. Madam General Counsel, is the measure legally and technically sufficient for our consideration?
Yes, it is.
Madam Secretary, is the record complete?
Once the report is filed.
Madam Budget Director, does the measure's fiscal impact statement comply with council requirements?
Yes, it does.
Without objection, this measure will be placed on the consent agenda for today's legislative meeting. The last item for markup in the committee, the whole, is Resolution PR twenty-five dash one zero nine, entitled the removal of a portion of Twenty-Sixth Street Northeast from the plan of the permanent system of highways of the District of Columbia, Approval Resolution of twenty twenty-three. Proposed resolution twenty-five dash one zero nine would remove a forty-five-foot-wide portion of Twenty-Sixth Street Northeast along the east line of Lot Eight Twelve of Square Forty-Four Oh Eight and Lot Eight Oh Five of Square Forty-Three Ninety-Six in Ward Five from the plan of the permanent system of highways. The closure of this paper street will allow the Department of General Services, DGS, to finalize renovation and permitting process for the Arboretum Recreation Center, which is located at twenty-four twelve Rand Place Northeast. Enable the DGS to secure a permanent certificate of occupancy. Renovation of the recreation center began in twenty twenty-one and finished in November twenty twenty-two. The new recreation center includes a fitness center, multipurpose space, a technology lounge, and a community room. Assuming that this is approved by the committee, the committee finds that the portion of Twenty-Sixth Street Northwest, excuse me, northeast as depicted on the attached surveyor's plat is unnecessary for highway purposes. Accordingly, the committee recommends approval of the committee print for PR twenty-five dash one zero nine. This measure was first introduced at the request of the mayor on April twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-two. The committee, the whole, held a public hearing on the resolution on December twelfth, twenty twenty-two. The measure was reintroduced at the request of the mayor on February sixth, twenty twenty-three. The committee has received no testimony or comments in opposition to this resolution. If there's no objection, I move both the print report would leave for staff to make technical conforming and editorial changes. Is there discussion? The roll call vote will be on both the print report for PR twenty-five dash one zero nine. Mr. Cash?
Councilmember Allen.
Yes.
Councilmember Allen votes yes. Councilmember Bonds.
Yes.
Councilmember Bonds votes yes. Councilmember Fruman.
Yes.
Councilmember Fruman votes yes. Councilmember Gray.
Yes.
Councilmember Gray votes yes. Councilmember Henderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson votes yes. Councilmember Louis George.
Yes.
Councilmember Louis George votes yes. Councilmember McDuffie.
Yes.
Councilmember McDuffie votes yes. Chairman Mendelson.
Yes.
Chairman Mendelson votes yes. Councilmember Nadeau.
Yes.
Councilmember Nadeau votes yes. Councilmember Parker.
Yes.
Councilmember Parker votes yes. Councilmember Pinto.
Yes.
Councilmember Pinto votes yes. Councilmember Robert White.
Yes.
Councilmember Robert White votes yes. Councilmember Tran White.
Yes.
Councilmember Tran White votes yes. Mr. Chairman, there are thirteen yeses.
Thank you, Mr. Cash. The print and report are approved unanimously. Madam General Counsel, is the measure legally and technically sufficient for our consideration?
Yes, it is.
Madam Secretary, is the record complete?
Once the report is filed.
Madam Budget Director, does the measure's fiscal impact statement comply with council requirements?
Yes, it does.
Without objection, this measure will be placed on the consent agenda for today's legislative meeting. There were no measures reported out of other committees, so we have no other business that I know of. We will take a few minutes. I was told two minutes. We will take five minutes to start the legislative meeting, but I'm not going anywhere, so we will start presumably in five minutes. The time is twelve twenty-five, and this meeting is adjourned.
They're chuckling at two oh two-two. And it's like, by the way.
We could get order in the chamber, please. We could get order in the chamber, please. You're gonna get. I am calling order this meeting. This is a regular legislative meeting of the council of the District of Columbia. It's also the fourth legislative meeting of council period twenty-five. Today is Tuesday, March seventh, two thousand twenty-three. The time is twelve thirty-five in the afternoon. This meeting is being conducted in person in Room five hundred, the council chambers of the Johnny Wilson Building. But there are a couple of members who are participating virtually, and the public can attend virtually via the Zoom video conference broadcast platform. This meeting is also being broadcast on council channel thirteen cable television and is available on the council's website, www.dcouncil.gov. We always begin our legislative meetings with a moment of silence. I would ask that everyone in the chamber, as well as on the dais, would respect and take this opportunity for a moment of silence and reflection. Madam Secretary, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Allen.
Here.
Councilmember Bonds.
Here.
Councilmember Fruman.
Present.
Councilmember Gray.
Here.
Councilmember Henderson.
Here.
Councilmember Louis George.
Here.
Councilmember McDuffie.
Here.
Chairman Mendelson.
Present.
Councilmember Nadeau.
Here.
Councilmember Parker.
Here.
Councilmember.
Present.
Councilmember Robert.
Present.
Councilmember Tran White.
Present.
Mr. Chairman, you have a call.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. I believe there's no secretary's report of committee filings. Is that correct, Madam Secretary?
That's correct, Mr. Chairman.
So we will turn to the report of introductions, and I recognize it, Sheriff Tim, Councilmember McDuffie.
I'll move to waive the reading of the secretary's report of introductions.
Is there a motion to waive the reading? Is there discussion? On the motion to waive the reading, all those in favor say aye.
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 Are there any no votes? The motion is approved unanimously. We have the consent agendas. And at the committee, the whole markup, I noted that Bill twenty-five dash sixty-eight on page four would be on non-consent. So that is removed from the consent agenda. That's actually the only change I'm making to the consent agenda. Are there any other changes to the consent agenda, Mr.? Ah, Mr. Fruman, you can say that on the microphone. I had indicated at breakfast there would be several other measures that were marked up by committee, the whole on February twenty-first. Reports have now been filed, but it is in order for our first reading for the prints, the committee prints to be approved. And that is on page three. If there are no other changes from members, we have the consent agenda before us. The one item removed is We have the consent agenda before us. The one item removed is on page four at the top of the page, this free gender bill. There'll be a roll call vote on the consent agenda, Madam Secretary.
So I'm in a doubt. Yes. I'm gonna do votes, yes.
Yes.
Councilmember Parker.
Yes.
Councilmember Parker votes, yes. Councilmember Pinto.
Yes.
Councilmember Pinto votes, yes. Councilmember Robert White.
Yes.
Councilmember Robert White votes, yes. Councilmember Trayon White.
Yes.
Councilmember Trayon White votes, yes. Councilmember Allen.
Yes.
Councilmember Allen votes, yes. Councilmember Bonds.
Yes.
Councilmember Bonds votes, yes. Councilmember Fu Man.
Yes.
Councilmember Fu Man votes, yes. Councilmember Gray.
Yes.
Gray votes, yes. Councilmember Henderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson votes, yes. Councilmember Louis George.
Yes.
Councilmember Louis George votes, yes. Councilmember McDuffie.
Yes.
Councilmember McDuffie votes, yes. And Chairman Mendelson.
Yes.
Chairman Mendelson votes, yes. Mr. Chairman, there are thirteen yeses.
The consent agenda is approved unanimously. I will turn to Bill twenty five dash sixty eight, Street Bender Advancement Amendment Act of two thousand twenty three. So moved. Is there discussion? We'll have a roll call vote on this. Madam Secretary, would you call the roll?
Councilmember Parker.
Yes.
Councilmember Parker votes.
Here. Yes.
Councilmember Parker votes, yes. Councilmember Pinto.
Yes.
Councilmember Pinto votes, yes. Councilmember Robert White.
Yes, and here.
Councilmember Robert White votes, yes. Councilmember Trayon White.
Yes.
Councilmember Trayon White votes, yes. Councilmember Allen.
Yes.
Councilmember Allen votes, yes. Councilmember Bonds.
Yes.
Councilmember Bonds votes, yes. Councilmember Fu Man.
Yes.
Councilmember Fu Man votes, yes. Councilmember Gray.
Yes.
Councilmember Gray votes, yes. Councilmember Henderson.
Present.
Councilmember Henderson will be recorded as present. Councilmember Louis George.
Yes.
Councilmember Louis George votes, yes. Councilmember McDuffie.
Yes.
Councilmember McDuffie votes, yes. Chairman Mendelson.
Yes.
Chairman Mendelson votes, yes. Councilmember Menadell.
Yes.
Councilmember Menadell votes, yes. Mr. Chairman, there are twelve yeses and one present.
Uh, the bill is approved first reading. Uh, we'll turn now to the non-consent agenda. We could have order, please. Uh, we will turn to the non-consent agenda. Uh, the first measure is Bill twenty five dash eighty six. Hotel Enhanced Cleaning and Notice of Service Disruption Clarification Temporary Amendment Act of two thousand twenty three. This is final reading. Councilor Bonds.
Um, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Last month, the council passed the Hotel Enhanced Cleaning and Notice of Service Disruption Emergency Amendment Act of two thousand twenty two, and this emergency legislation authorized the mayor to issue regulations that establish requirements for cleaning and maintaining D C's hotels and motels and to establish standards for public notice of lodging establishment service disruption. The temporary legislation before us today will reauthorize the provisions of the previous bill and will include a new section to exempt lodging establishments that operate on an extended stay model. As we see tourism in the district grow towards pre-pandemic levels, it is essential that we continue to provide guests with both routine and enhanced house keeping, and that's what this bill does. For the reasons laid out above, I urge my colleagues to support this measure, and thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move the temporary legislation.
Thank you, Councilmember Bonds. Further discussion? We'll have a roll call vote. Madam Secretary, the votes on twenty, Bill twenty five dash eighty six.
Councilmember Pinto.
No.
Councilmember Pinto votes, no. Councilmember Robert White.
Yes.
Councilmember Robert White votes, yes. Councilmember Trayon White.
Yes.
Councilmember Trayon White votes, yes. Councilmember Allen.
Yes.
Councilmember Allen votes, yes. Councilmember Bonds.
Yes.
Councilmember Bonds votes, yes. Councilmember Fu Man.
Yes.
Councilmember Fu Man votes, yes. Councilmember Gray.
Yes.
Councilmember Gray votes, yes. Councilmember Henderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson votes, yes. Councilmember Louis George.
Yes.
Councilmember Louis George votes, yes. Councilmember McDuffie.
Yes.
Councilmember McDuffie votes, yes.
Yes.
Chairman Mendelson.
Chairman Mendelson. Yes.
Chairman Mendelson votes, yes. Councilmember Menadell.
Yes.
Councilmember Menadell votes, yes. Councilmember Parker.
Yes.
Councilmember Parker votes, yes. Mr. Chairman, there are twelve yeses and one no.
I'm sorry, Madam Secretary. Did you say it was twelve yeses and one no?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Uh, the bill's approved second reading or final reading. We'll turn to emergency. Uh, the first is Use of Force Review Board Emergency Declaration Resolution of two thousand twenty three, P R twenty five dash one two two. Councilmember Pinto.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Today I'm moving the Use of Force Review Board Emergency Act Declaration and Declaration Resolution of two thousand twenty three. These emergency measures would accelerate language that the council unanimously adopted last December in the Comprehensive Policing and Reform Amendment Act. That permanent legislation will not be effective until May eleventh of this year. Specifically, these emergency measures would amend the qualifications membership on M P D's Use of Force Review Board. As members may know, my apologies, half of my just cut off, uh, that board is broadly responsible for reviewing incidents of use of force for M P D officers to determine if use of force was justified and consistent in M P D's model use of force policy and district law. The board may also submit recommendations related to the incident in question or to more broadly enhance department practices, including trainings and equipment. The board is currently made up of thirteen voting members, seven of whom are appointed by the chief of police, one each from seven specific M P D divisions. M P D has raised concerns regarding these very specific membership requirements for service on the board, which mean that the chief is compelled to appoint members whose particular experience and skill set may not be a best fit for the work being done by the board or who do not have the necessary skills available to serve. As I mentioned earlier in my remarks, the council recognized these concerns and made changes to board membership in the Comprehensive Policing and Justice Reform Amendment Act to provide greater flexibility to the chief in his appointments to these seven seats to serve on this important board. These emergency measures simply accelerate the language in that permanent bill, facilitating the chief appointing now appointees to to the board rather than this spring when the permanent goes into effect. Accelerating the effective date of this language will enhance the work of the board as well as the quality of our use of force reviews and recommendations. I move the emergency declaration.
Thank you, Councilmember. We have the declaration before us. Is there discussion? Uh, we'll have a roll call vote on the declaration. Madam Secretary, would you call the roll?
Councilmember Robert.
Yes.
Councilmember Robert votes, yes. Councilmember.
Yes.
Councilmember Trayon White votes, yes. Councilmember Allen.
Yes.
Councilmember Allen votes, yes. Councilmember Bonds.
Yes.
Councilmember Bonds votes, yes. Councilmember Fu Man.
Yes.
Councilmember Fu Man votes, yes. Councilmember Gray.
Yes.
Councilmember Gray votes, yes. Councilmember Henderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson votes, yes. Councilmember Louis George.
Yes.
Councilmember Louis George votes, yes. Councilmember McDuffie.
Yes.
Councilmember McDuffie votes, yes. Chairman Mendelson.
Yes.
Chairman Mendelson votes, yes. Councilmember Menadell.
Yes.
Councilmember Menadell votes, yes. Councilmember Parker.
Yes.
Councilmember Parker votes, yes. Councilmember Pinto.
Yes.
Councilmember Pinto votes, yes. Mr. Chairman, there are thirteen yeses.
Uh, thank you, Madam Secretary. The declaration is approved unanimously. We have the underlying bill, Bill twenty five dash one five five. Councilmember Pinto.
Chairman, I move the emergency act.
Uh, the bill is before us. Is there discussion? Since the declaration is approved unanimously, we can do a voice vote on this. The vote is on Bill twenty five dash one five five. All those in favor say aye, aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Madam Secretary, I don't see or hear any no votes. Do you agree?
Agreed, Mr. Chairman.
Bill is approved unanimously. The next measure is Reverse Mortgage Insurance and Tax Payment Program Extension Emergency Declaration Resolution of two thousand twenty three. P R twenty five dash one two five. Councilmember Robert White.
Thank you, Chairman. The Reverse Mortgage Foreclosure Prevention Amendment Act of two thousand eighteen establishes the D C Housing Finance Agency's Mortgage Insurance and Tax Payment Program or R E M I T. R E M I T was created to pay overdue property taxes and insurance for reverse mortgage borrowers who might lose their homes because of non-payment of taxes. R E M I T is strictly for seniors over the age of sixty two. The program was originally funded with five hundred thousand dollars. Since the original pilot program expired, R E M I T has had, has been extended through a number of emergency and temporary measures. The most recent emergency and temporary passed by this body unanimously in sun, sunset on January first, two thousand twenty three. Excuse me. Just last week, my team spoke with the leadership of D C H F A who confirmed there's around two hundred thousand dollars remaining in uh, from the five hundred, original five hundred thousand dollar appropriation. The general effect of this emergency is no different than the prior iterations. It will allow D C A H F A to access the remaining R E M I T funding for the purpose of supporting seniors who are facing foreclosure. This emergency, like the prior iteration, does make three key changes from the two thousand eighteen act. Emergency includes condominium fees and homeowners association fees as approved uses of the financial assistance provided by the program. Additionally, it increases the maximum monetary assistance from twenty five thousand to forty thousand dollars. Finally, I've removed the eighteen month applicability window from the measure so that D C A H F A will be able to access the funds for the, the duration of the emergency in temporary. I want to thank former council member Silverman for first introducing the R E M I T program in two thousand seventeen and working to get the program to this point. I also want to thank council member Bonds for stewarding this important program over the years. I look forward to working with your team on a permanent measure. I think I speak for all of us when I say that supporting senior homeowners is an important priority. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Councilmember White. Is there discussion? The vote will be a roll call vote on the declaration, P R twenty five dash one two five. Madam Secretary.
Councilmember Trayon White. Trayon White.
Yes.
Councilmember Trayon White votes, yes.
Yes.
Councilmember Allen.
Yes.
Councilmember Allen votes, yes.
Yes.
Yeah, yes.
Councilmember Bonds.
Yeah. Yeah.
One moment. Sorry, sorry. The sound is.
Sound marbles.
Marbles. Apologize for that.
Well, we can hear you.
Yeah.
And.
I don't know what you said. I will move forward. Councilmember Allen, Allen.
Yes, yes.
Councilmember Allen votes, yes, yes. Councilmember Bonds.
Yes.
Councilmember Bonds votes, yes, yes. Councilmember Fu Man.
Men, yes, yes.
Councilmember Fu Man votes, yes, yes. Councilmember Gray, Councilmember Gray.
Yes, yes.
Councilmember Gray votes, yes, yes. Councilmember Henderson.
Henderson.
Yes, yes.
Councilmember Henderson votes, yes, yes. Councilmember Louis George.
Louis George.
Yes. Councilmember Louis George.
Yes, yes.
Councilmember McDuffie.
Yes.
Councilmember McDuffie.
Yeah, yeah.
Chairman Mendelson.
Chairman Mendelson. Yes, yeah, yes.
Chairman Mendelson votes, yes, yes. Councilmember Menadell.
Menadell, yes, yes.
Councilmember Menadell votes, yes, yes. Councilmember Parker.
Parker.
Yes, yes.
Councilmember Parker votes. Councilmember Pinto.
Pinto. Yes.
Councilmember Pinto votes, yes. Councilmember Robert.
Yes.
Councilmember Robert.
Robert.
Mr. Chairman, there are thirteen yeses.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. The declaration is approved unanimously. We have the underlying bill or on the underlying bill, Councilmember White.
So moved.
This is Bill twenty five dash one six one. Is there discussion? Since the declaration was approved unanimously, we can have a roll call vote, excuse me, a voice vote on the bill. This is on Bill twenty five dash one six one. All those in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Are there any no votes? Mr. Assistant General Sec, uh, Mr. Assistant Secretary, uh, do you see or hear any no votes? Uh, the bill's approved unanimously. The next measure is Certificate of Assurance Moratorium Extension Emergency Declaration Resolution of two thousand twenty three. P R twenty five dash one two four. Councilmember Robert White.
Thank you, Chairman. The legislation maintains the existing moratorium on applications for and the mayor's issuance of certificates of assurance associated with district rent stabilization laws. Council unanimously passed the initial moratorium in two thousand twenty. This emergency legislation is necessary to maintain the status quo and give the council time to carefully deliberate an appropriate course of action regarding certificates of assurance. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Councilmember. Is there discussion? This will be a roll call vote, or we'll try to do a roll call vote on P R twenty five dash one two four. Madam Secretary.
Just give this another.
I'll take it from here. I'll take it from here.
Oh. Can you hear me?
I'm giving you the, I'm giving you the rest of the morning off here, so.
Thank you. You're so kind.
Councilmember Allen. Yes. Councilmember Allen votes, yes. Councilmember Bonds.
Yes.
Councilmember Bonds votes, yes. Councilmember Fu Man. Yes. Councilmember Fu Man votes, yes. Councilmember Gray.
Yes.
Councilmember Gray votes, yes. Councilmember Henderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson votes, yes. Councilmember Louis George.
Yes.
Councilmember Louis George votes, yes. Councilmember McDuffie.
Yes.
Councilmember McDuffie votes, yes. Chairman Mendelson.
Yes.
Chairman Mendelson votes, yes. Councilmember Menadell.
Yes.
Councilmember Menadell votes, yes. Councilmember Parker. Councilmember Parker votes, yes. Councilmember Pinto.
Yes.
Councilmember Pinto votes, yes. Councilmember Robert White. Yes. Councilmember Robert White votes, yes. Councilmember Trayon White. Yes. Councilmember Trayon White votes, yes. Mr. Chairman, you have thirteen yeses.
Thank you, Mr. Assistant Secretary. The declaration is approved unanimously. The underlying bill is Bill twenty five dash one five nine. Councilmember White.
So moved.
Discussion. Since the declaration was approved unanimously, we'll do a voice vote. This is on Bill twenty five dash one five nine. All those in favor say aye, aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Are there any no votes? Mr. Assistant Secretary, I don't see or hear any no votes. You agree?
Agree.
The bill is approved unanimously. The next measure is P R twenty five dash one two six. Comprehensive Policing and Justice Reform Emergency Declaration Resolution of two thousand twenty three. Councilmember Allen.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. On April nineteenth, two thousand twenty two, the council passed the Comprehensive Policing and Justice Reform Temporary Amendment Act of two thousand twenty two, which is set to expire on March twenty fifth of two thousand twenty three. That bill was the latest in a series of emergency and temporary measures to maintain the suite of reforms the council initially approved back in summer of two thousand twenty as the Committee on Judiciary and Public Safety considered a final permanent policing reform bill. That committee approved uh, Bill twenty four dash three twenty, the Comprehensive Policing and Justice Reform Amendment Act of two thousand twenty two on November thirtieth, two thousand twenty two, and on December. on November thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-two, and on December twentieth, two thousand and twenty-two. The council passed that permanent measure on second reading. Uh, Bill twenty-four dash three-twenty is currently undergoing its congressional review, the projected law date of May eleventh, two thousand and twenty-three. So this final round of emergency measures is necessary as a gap filler uh, to make sure that we don't experience a gap between the law's expiration of temporary measure and the effective date of the permanent measure. With that, I move the declaration.
Thank you, Councilmembers. Is there discussion? This will be a roll call vote. On the Declaration, PR twenty-five dash one-two-six, um, um, Mister Assistant Secretary?
Councilmember Bonds?
Yes.
Councilmember Bonds votes, yes. Councilmember Freeman?
Yes.
Councilmember Freeman votes, yes. Councilmember Gray?
Yes.
Councilmember Gray votes, yes. Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson votes, yes. Councilmember Louis George? Councilmember Louis George? Councilmember McDuffie?
Yes.
Uh, Councilmember McDuffie votes, yes. Chairman Mendelson?
Yes.
Chairman Mendelson votes, yes. Councilmember Nadeau?
Yes.
Councilmember Nadeau votes, yes. Councilmember Parker?
Yes.
Councilmember Parker votes, yes. Councilmember Pinto?
Yes.
Councilmember Pinto votes, yes. Councilmember Robert White?
Yes.
Councilmember Robert White votes, yes. Councilmember Trayon White?
Yes.
Councilmember Trayon White votes, yes. Um, Councilmember Louis George?
Mister Chairman, can we do the, uh?
I get to vote too, I'm pretty sure.
Yes, Councilmember Allen.
Yes. And if yes, can we have two minutes?
Two minutes. Two minutes.
Thank you. Yes.
I think Councilmember Louis George votes, yes, so. Mr. Chairman, you have thirteen yeses.
If the declaration is approved unanimously, we have the underlying bill, Bill twenty-five dash one-six-three. Councilmember Allen?
So moves, Chair.
Discussion? The, because the declaration was approved unanimously, we'll do a voice vote. On Bill twenty-five dash one-six-three, all those in favor say aye, aye.
Aye.
Are there any no votes? The bill is approved unanimously. The next measure is PR twenty-five dash one-two-three, Commission on the Arts and Humanities Acting Executive Director Emergency Declaration Resolution of two thousand and twenty-three. Actually, now that I think about it, that's me. Under current law, when there is a vacancy such as in the executive director of an agency, the mayor may appoint the interim or acting agency head for those subordinate district government agencies. However, no such authority exists for independent agencies with governing bodies that appoint their agency head. Commission on Arts and Humanities by statute appoints its executive director subject to confirmation by the council. The commission has identified a candidate for the executive director position, and the commission seeks to allow that nominee to begin serving as acting executive director for up to a hundred and eighty days in anticipation of council confirmation. That's the purpose of this emergency legislation, to enable the commission to move forward now with the person they've designated or chosen to be their executive director to be able to appoint him as the, um, acting uh, agent executive director. Um, and, uh, I would note that the committee as a whole has scheduled a hearing on March thirtieth for the nominee as well as on this legislation. So we've got the hearing scheduled. That's the purpose of the declaration, to let the commission go forward now, or of the emergency legislation. So I move the declaration, and is there discussion? Do a roll call. This is on PR twenty-five dash one-twenty-three. Mister Assistant? Madam Secretary, you're back?
Let's hope. I think so. Councilmember Freeman?
Yes.
Councilmember Freeman votes, yes. Councilmember Gray?
Yes.
Councilmember Gray votes, yes. Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson votes, yes. Councilmember Louis George?
Yes.
Councilmember Louis George votes, yes. Councilmember McDuffie?
Yes.
Councilmember McDuffie votes, yes. Chairman Mendelson?
Yes.
Chairman Mendelson votes, yes. Councilmember Nadeau?
Yes.
Councilmember Nadeau votes, yes. Councilmember Parker?
Yes.
Councilmember Parker votes, yes. Councilmember Pinto?
Yes.
Councilmember Pinto votes, yes. Councilmember Robert White?
Yes.
Councilmember Robert White votes, yes. Councilmember Trayon White?
Yes.
Councilmember Trayon White votes, yes. Councilmember Allen?
Yes.
Councilmember Allen votes, yes. And Councilmember Bonds?
Yes.
Councilmember Bonds votes, yes. Mister Chairman, there are thirteen yeses.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. The declaration is approved unanimously. The underlying bill is, is Bill twenty-five dash one-five-seven, Commission on the Arts and Humanities Acting Executive Director Emergency Amendment Act of two thousand and twenty-three. So moved. Discussion? Uh, by voice vote, all those in favor say aye, aye.
Aye.
Are there any no votes? The, uh, bill is approved unanimously. The next measure is PR twenty-five dash one-two-seven, Fidelity and Access to Government Communications Clarification Emergency Declaration Resolution of two thousand and twenty-three. Councilmember Bonds?
Thank you, um, Mister Chairman. Today, I'm moving the fidelity and access to Government Communications Clarification Temporary Amendment Act of two thousand and twenty-three. On March one, two thousand and twenty-two, the council unanimously voted to approve the Fidelity and Access to Government Communications Clarification Emergency Amendment Act of two thousand and twenty-two. This amended the District of Columbia Public Records Management Act of nineteen eighty-five to clarify that all communications received or received electronically in the course of official business are subject to existing record retention obligations. On April fifth, two thousand and twenty-two, the council then unanimously passed the Community Service Graduation Requirement Waiver Regulation Temporary Amendment Act of two thousand and twenty-two, effective June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-two. A temporary act which included as an amendment the text of the Emergency Act. This temporary act expired on February tenth, two thousand and twenty-three. The Emergency Act passed after the release of a concerning report regarding the executive branch's use of WhatsApp Messenger. Among many features available within the application is the ability to auto-delete messages after a set period of time. Emergency legislation is therefore necessary to ensure that existing record retention guidelines continue to apply to electronic communications and to ensure that public access to information is not diminished or compromised. Thank you, um, Chairman, and I move this emergency declaration and the underlying bill.
Thank you, Councilmember Bonds. We have the declaration before us as their discussion. There'll be a roll call vote on the Declaration, PR twenty-five dash one-two-seven. Madam Secretary?
Councilmember Gray?
Yes.
Councilmember Gray votes, yes. Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson votes, yes. Councilmember Louis George?
Yes.
Councilmember Louis George votes, yes. Councilmember McDuffie?
Yes.
Councilmember McDuffie votes, yes. Chairman Mendelson?
Yes.
Chairman Mendelson votes, yes. Councilmember Nadeau?
Yes.
Councilmember Nadeau votes, yes. Councilmember Parker?
Yes.
Councilmember Parker votes, yes. Councilmember Pinto?
Yes.
Councilmember Pinto votes, yes. Councilmember Robert White?
Yes.
Councilmember Robert White votes, yes. Councilmember Trayon White?
Yes.
Councilmember Trayon White votes, yes. Councilmember Allen?
Yes.
Councilmember Allen votes, yes. Councilmember Bonds?
Yes.
Councilmember Bonds votes, yes. Councilmember Freeman?
Yes.
Councilmember Freeman votes, yes. Mister Chairman, there are thirteen yeses.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. The declaration is approved unanimously. We have the underlying bill, Councilmember Bonds?
So moved, Mister Chairman.
Discussion? Uh, the vote is on Bill twenty-five dash one-six-five. By voice vote, all those in favor say aye, aye.
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 Are there any no votes? Uh, the ayes have it unanimously. Next measure is PR twenty-five dash one-two-one. Motor Vehicle and Homeowner Insurance Prior Approval Rate Filing Amendment Emergency Declaration Resolution of two thousand and twenty-three. Councilmember McDuffie?
Thank you, Mister Chairman. The Department of Insurance, Securities and Banking has noticed a recent trend in motor vehicle and homeowner insurance markets in the district where insurers have been requesting double-digit rate increases. In some cases, the increases are in excess of twenty percent. While insurers are entitled to an adequate premium rate in exchange for the insurance coverage they provide, the commissioner is concerned about the impact of these rate increases on policyholders. The rate filings of motor vehicle and homeowners' insurance currently operate under a filing use standard in the district, which means that the insurers may implement their rate increases immediately immediately upon filing their rates with the commissioner. However, the department is often unable to review the rate filings and consult with the insurers to substantiate the rate increases before the rate increases take effect. Commissioner is concerned that the large premium increases could cause policyholders to miss payments due to their inability to afford the increased rates, while at the same time lacking sufficient time to shop for more affordable insurance. Such an instance could result in policy lapses due to non-payment and increase in uninsured motorists and homeowners' insurance. By changing the rate filing standard for motor vehicle and homeowners' insurance rate filings from filing use to prior approval, the department will have time to review the filings and ensure that the rate increases are neither excessive nor discriminatory before the new rates become effective. Further, by requiring insurers to provide sixty days' advance written notice of any rate increase of ten percent or more, policyholders will have more time to consider alternative insurance options. The Committee on Business and Economy Development Plan is to adhere on the permanent measure that is pending in the committee. With that, I'm going to move the emergency declaration. I have an amendment to the move of the bill.
We have the declaration before us as their discussion. The vote will be on PR twenty-five dash one-two-one. Madam Secretary, would you call the roll?
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson votes, yes. Councilmember Louis George?
Yes.
Councilmember Louis George votes, yes. Councilmember McDuffie?
Yes.
Councilmember McDuffie votes, yes. Chairman Mendelson?
Yes.
Chairman Mendelson votes, yes. Councilmember Nadeau?
Yes.
Councilmember Nadeau votes, yes. Councilmember Parker?
Yes.
Councilmember Parker votes, yes. Councilmember Pinto?
Yes.
Councilmember Pinto votes, yes. Councilmember Robert White?
Yes.
Councilmember Robert White votes, yes. Councilmember Trayon White?
Yes.
Councilmember Trayon White votes, yes. Councilmember Allen?
Yes.
Councilmember Allen votes, yes. Councilmember Bonds?
Yes.
Councilmember Bonds votes, yes. Councilmember Freeman?
Yes.
Councilwoman Freeman votes, yes. And Councilmember Gray?
Yes.
Councilmember Gray votes, yes. Mister Chairman, there are thirteen yeses.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. The declaration is approved unanimously. We have the underlying bill, Bill twenty-five dash one-four-seven. Councilmember McDuffie?
Mister Chairman, I want to move an amendment at this time.
How about if you say so moved first?
So moved.
All right, we have the bill before us. Mister McDuffie?
The Department of Insurance, Securities and Banking had requested, uh, an amendment that an applicability date be added for sixty days' advance written notice requirement to give the insurance industry time to update their systems and generate the notices. This amendment adds the applicability date of on or after September first, two thousand and twenty-three, to the emergency and temporary measures.
What's the applicability date again?
September first, two thousand and twenty-three.
If there's no objection, the amendment which was linked in the agenda and circulated, uh, will be approved if there's no objection. Not hearing any objection? So the amendment is approved. We have the bill is amended before us. Is there further discussion? Uh, by a voice vote? Bill twenty-five dash one-fourty-seven as amended. All those in favor say aye, aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Um, the ayes have it unanimously. Uh, we have the temporary bills. If there's no objection, we'll consider all seven of them in block and do one roll call vote just to see on all seven to see if the secretary's audio is still working. We have Bill twenty-five dash one-fifty-six, Use of Force Review Board Temporary. Bill twenty-five dash one-six-two, Reverse Mortgage Insurance and Tax Payment Program Extension Temporary. The Bill twenty-five dash one-sixty, Certificate of Assurance Moratorium Extension Temporary. Bill twenty-five dash one-six-four, Comprehensive Policing and Justice Reform Temporary. Bill twenty-five dash one-five-eight, Commission on the Arts and Humanities Acting Executive Director Temporary. Bill twenty-five dash one-six-six, Fidelity and Access to Government Communications Clarification Temporary. And Bill twenty-five dash one-four-eight, Motor Vehicle and Homeowner Insurance Prior Approval Rate Filing Temporary. And the latter would include Mister McDuffie's amendment. And that's clear, Madam, Madam General Counsel?
Yes, it is, Mister Chairman.
I don't believe any of the others were amended. Not hearing any objection. The seven measures are before us. Is there discussion? Uh, I do want to ask, um, I think it's on the Comprehensive Policing and Justice Reform, Madam General Counsel. Uh, between now and second reading, since this is a temporary, to look and see whether we actually need to move it temporary, because this is a gap filler for legislation that's already been approved on a permanent basis. There's no further discussion. The roll call vote will be on the seven temporary bills, temporary measures that I just read and are on pages eight, nine of the agenda, including Mister McDuffie's amendment to the Motor Vehicle and Homeowner Insurance Bill. Madam Secretary, please call the roll.
Councilmember Louis George?
Yes.
Councilmember Louis George votes, yes. Councilmember McDuffie?
Yes.
Councilmember McDuffie votes, yes. Chairman Mendelson?
Yes.
Chairman Mendelson votes, yes. Councilmember Nadeau?
Yes.
Councilmember Nadeau votes, yes. Councilmember Parker?
Yes.
Councilmember Parker votes, yes. Councilmember Pinto?
Yes.
Councilmember Pinto votes, yes. Councilmember Robert White?
Yes.
Councilmember Robert White votes, yes. Councilmember Trayon White? Councilmember Trayon White? Councilmember Allen?
Yes.
Councilmember Allen votes, yes. Councilmember Bonds?
Yes.
Councilmember Bonds votes, yes. Councilmember Freeman?
Yes.
Councilmember Freeman votes, yes. Councilmember Gray?
Yes.
Councilmember Gray votes, yes. Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson votes, yes. Mister Chairman, there are twelve yeses and one absent.
Uh, thank you, Madam Secretary. I'm pausing just a little bit to see if Councilmember White comes back on. And I don't see that. I believe you said there was, did the vote was twelve to nothing? Uh, the, uh,
Twelve to one, one absent.
Twelve to zero, plus one absent. So the vote is unanimous. And the seven temporaries are approved on first reading. That's going to conclude the business of this meeting. The next legislative meeting is scheduled for April fourth, two thousand and twenty-three, and the committee as a whole will be in two weeks, which I believe is March twenty-first. Time is one nineteen PM, and this meeting is adjourned.